Welcome, everybody. We are about five minutes behind schedule, but we can make that up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've got, at this time, I'll ask for our clerk of counsel to read off our notice, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings in the agendas were posted and furnished by all news media and persons requesting notification.
Okay, and at this time, we'll call for a motion. We go into executive session, please.
So move.
Second. Second, all in favor, please signify.
I'd like to add to the executive session, the Gillison Bill sandpit for attorney questions.
That'll be fine. We'll amend that agenda to include the Gillison Bill on the sandpit. And we've got a motion, and we've got a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At this time, we'll call for a motion to come out of the executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to come out of the executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And are there any actions coming out of the executive session?
Yes, I'd like to move to authorize the county administrator to sign such documents as may be provided by the attorneys for the plaintiff's liaison committee in regards to the South Carolina opioid litigation in order to approve the amended allocation agreement and to participate in the new settlement as discussed in executive session on the Capitol House.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
So move.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. At this time, we'll stand for our pledge of allegiance, followed by our indication. Pass that.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, a good republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almost all in righteous God, you come to me one more time, be in your presence. Father God, we get ready to go into our regular Monday night meeting, Father God. Father God, we pray, Father God, that everybody in government is self-called, and Father God, and the meeting being forward and going, be conducted. Father God, we leave this place and not your presence. We ask you to give everybody a traveling blessing after they go back home, Father God, in the direction that they need to go, even if the north, east, west, or south, in the direction they need to go. Yes, all in many blessings, in the name of our son Jesus' name, will anybody say amen?
Amen. Thank you. Pass that.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to our council meeting. It's good to see a room full of our concerned citizens. Hopefully, you'll find our meeting educational, and we appreciate your participation in being here tonight. That shows that you care about what's going on in the county just as much as we do. Thank you for being with us. At this time, we will, on the consent agenda, call for discussion and then a motion for approval with any changes.
Chairman.
Yes, sir, Councilman Kim.
I'd like to remove number 16, change order for part of, from the consent agenda.
Okay. Have a motion.
So move.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairman, yes, sir. I'd like to make another motion to send the approval of minutes into the consent agenda.
Have a motion, have a second.
So move.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then approval of our regular agenda. Any comments or discussions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remove the present takes into the agenda.
That'd be number eight.
Agreed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
So move.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. That should take care of all the right of agenda revisions. We have no proclamations. Next item is item 10 on the public hearings and action items. David Tetter, consideration of first reading. To extend the date by which certain properties subject to development agreement entered by the county and conduit or street partners LLC must be conveyed by the property's current owner to the developer thereof to allow for the additional time for this developer to complete full entitlement of the property and matters related thereto, Mr. Tetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairmembers of council. As noted in the ordinance, about a year ago, the developer came to council and asked for a development agreement and plan unit development for his property. It was granted on the condition that he acquired the property in fee sample by June of 2022. He thought that that was going to have plenty of time to get all the Army Corps, OCRM, et cetera permits. There have been delays. He's requested the council to extend that date from June 30th, 2023, to December 31st of this year. That's the only request that he's asked for. And he apologizes for not being here tonight. I'm sure, I'm not as easy to be here for the public hearing and second reading on April 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. Tetter. And I believe, as far as the entitlements, there it is a backlog with Army Corps engineers and OCRM, which has caused this delay for the entitlements to be acquired.
Acquired.
And I believe that he's had extensive back surgery, which is the reason that he's not here tonight, or else he would be here. So he's not here by choice, let's say.
And I have checked. Ms. Wagner can confirm. He's been diligent in his filings and consultations with our planning department throughout this time here. He's just being hung up.
Right. I understand. Any questions or concerns from council before we call for a motion?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to be voting no, just to be consistent with my personnel.
Understood. At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have open floor to the public.
Mr. Chairman, this is where your consent agenda item was moved?
I'm sorry, sir.
Your consent agenda item that was moved, this is where that would appropriately take place?
Number 16, number 16.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, number 16 is the change order for Marshco Fire Station that was previously approved February 2nd, 23 meeting. Chief, I guess you and Kim is going to elaborate on this.
Yes, sir. We're going to tag team. So we have, we presented a change order to you, which the council approved, I believe it was about $7,600 net. But we found out that the days were incorrect, the number of days needed to complete the project, and the Commerce Department requires that we correct those dates and get a correct number of days extended. And then the other part of that was that there is an electrical wiring issue. I'm going to let the chief explain this.
Right, so the gauge was not selected in the initial construction phase, and after the fact, we've now find out that we need the twice.
Well, we've extended it with change orders, but with this last change order did not extend it sufficiently.
Boy, I'd be glad if Micon can take over our construction management, because this has been painful.
Yes, sir. And unfortunately, some of the challenges arise among the automatic suppression system and the fire pump that was required for that. And so, within that, they were going to have to increase the amperage in the breakers of the electrical panel and also tie back in the generator. So as a result of that, they were going to have to add additional conduit runs and increase the size of the wire, which has subsequently led to some additional engineering work. And they believe that they had that resolved, and they are going to be bringing.
A new change order. So there will be a change order for that, cost-wise, with this next change order. But we met like Tuesday, and that was not sufficient time to get the change order ready for tonight's meeting. So we determined that we would bring the rescission and then come back at the next meeting, April 3rd, and have the final change order. I will say that they had the punch, they made a punch through, punchless walk through Friday, and they anticipate that you will take, what was it?
Conditional certificate of occupancy. We anticipate, yeah, actually Friday, by the time we get everything mobilized, we're hoping very shortly.
So the change order, the cost there is for material only, not labor?
No, sir. That should be everything to bring this to 100% completion.
There may be labor. I'm not, we don't know. We haven't seen it all yet. The engineer presented the plans Tuesday, and that was the first time that the contractor had seen it. So they were working on the price, and then, of course, the architect will have to review it to make sure that it's reasonable. And so when we get that, we'll bring that back. Again, the days also were an issue, the number of days.
With this change order, then this should be the last one, we hope. And then we would be occupying a fire station where in demand and aquable. What is our target date now? Because my phone's ringing off to help some people who live in that area. I mean, this...
I am being cautiously optimistic of April 3rd.
April 1st?
April 3rd.
April 3rd.
Yes, sir. So within that, though, we also have conveyed to the parties that this shall be the last change order.
We're not using any of those people yet, Captain.
Should I have a question?
Thank you. Questions from council?
Yes.
One second.
Just maybe I, maybe I just didn't catch it. Why are we changing the wiring? I'm precipitating that. So change order to someplace else?
Everything kind of came full circle on that. So there was a discussion regarding the automatic fire suppression system within the station as it was designed. And then, if you can recall, there was the tanks that were currently on-site, not being NFA compliant, some challenges with the engineer, and then having to get a second engineer involved with the fire suppression company. And as a result of that, we had to bring you a change order to procure a new National Fire Protection Association standard water supply tech. And then within that, no matter how we attempted to mitigate those processes, it came back to having to go to the fire pump that was engineered by the secondary engineer. And as a result of that, the engineer that originally had done the design process also was charged with electrical and plumbing. And so the runs between the pump house and the station and the panels that it's in came to a determination that they had to increase the wiring size that was subsequently, I don't think, factored in at the time.
Who decided the first set of wiring?
That would be the engineer of record within the plant.
So he made a mistake?
Yes.
He made a mistake. We wouldn't be changing it if it wasn't a mistake.
Okay. In a public forum, sir, I'm not an engineer. I can't, I can't speak on behalf of what may or may not have transpired with engineering. But yes, there were some challenges, and we reasonably suspect that these, this is the final push to bring this to 100% completion.
Mr. Chairman, I want to be sure that you all know, we've repeated this several times, that we, upon your approval, we pay these, but in each one of them, we note that we reserve the right to sue them for the money as well.
Good.
So if there is any problem, we'll go back and do it. We've done that with other county projects. It's a painful process to get through, and we thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. An actual place, and no reflection upon the staff. It's just an aggravation with the contractor.
Understood.
I know you're not an engineer. You're a fire chief, and I'm not sure, you know, should be apologizing. Thank you all. Thank you, Rusty. You do a good job, Rusty.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now we go back to public comment. We're going to open the floor to the public for ordinance 08-17. Any citizen of the county may sign to speak in person at a council meeting before the council's meeting, 7:30 start time, on the sign-in sheet.
Need a motion?
Oh, we need a, okay. Call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to do a rescinded change order, number eight.
So have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, I'm ready to do business. I'm sitting down rolling, y'all standing there going, what's that crazy chairman doing?
One second.
Okay. Are we ready now, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You'll keep me straight. So since I read half of the, I'll just pick up where I left off. The, "To address council on matters pertaining to county services and operations only, presentations will be limited to three minutes per person, and total public input will be limited to 30 minutes." At this point, we have two people that have signed in, and those are the two that will be speaking this evening. We first have Stephen Schmidt in regards to the airport. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Chairman Saul, council members, citizens of Jasper County. My name is Steve Schmidt, and I'm the president of the Regulon Aviation Community Association, or RACA. Tonight, I'm going to attempt to draw, to highlight some more contrast between what the county is allowed by law to do at the airport regarding commissions and what it's not allowed to do. The good news is that Jasper County Council does have the legal authority to create a commission named the Jasper County Airport Commission. Existing law is very clear about this, and RACA supports such an effort. Council can appoint members to the airport commission and control it to any degree desired. It will be a county-appointed commission, completely independent of state control. And at first glance, it appears that ordinance 19-14, which was passed in June of 2019, that that's the point of this ordinance, is to create an airport commission. However, at second glance, we find that the ordinance has a citation that reads, quote, "A point of powers to the Jasper County Aeronautics Commission were devolved to Jasper County in accordance with section 4-9-170 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina," unquote. More than a citation, this is actually a predicate, meaning that the rest of the ordinance is valid only if the claim is true. And that's the big problem, because the claim is simply not true. When you read section 4-9-170 carefully, it becomes very obvious that several limitations are attached to the authority granted to counties, and it's expressed by, quote, "But this authority shall not extend to school districts, special purpose districts, or other political subdivisions created by the General Assembly." The Jasper County Aeronautics Commission The Jasper County Aeronautics Commission is a special purpose district created by the General Assembly. But don't believe me, on June 12th, 1980, the Attorney General wrote an opinion that, quote, "We can find no authority in the Home Rule Act for the city or county to modify the commission by ordinance or otherwise, even if the commission is not a special purpose district or political subdivision," unquote. In 1985, Attorney General Opinion 85-36 concludes that, quote, "The Greenville Airport Commission can be, can be considered a special purpose district or political subdivision. So neither the city nor the county of Greenville have any authority to alter the structure of the commission," unquote. In 1996, the judge in the case of Thomas versus Cooper River Park ruled that, quote, "Home rule legislation cannot give county government more power over pre-home rule district than it is given in the original act creating the district," unquote. RACA has been summoned to a second meeting in Columbia with the Jasper County Legislative Delegation. We now have a favorable opinion from the Attorney General in hand, so this time, the discussion will not be focused on law, but it will be focused on what actions will the delegation take to protect its aeronautics commission from Jasper County Council overreach, unquote. RACA will make the case that the delegates have the duty to protect the aeronautics commission, even if that means the state must file suit against Jasper County Council in the court of common justice. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next, we have Mr. Melvin Woods.
Mr. Chairman.
You don't wanna say anything? You sure, Melvin? I'm always enjoying you talking.
I was in the site, not a camera cam.
Well, come on up here, we're gonna keep, yes, keep, it's getting good, he's starting out great.
He's got a table.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Okay. Moving right along, no resolutions. This time, we'll call for the administrators' report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I have a number of items on my report for you, information only, a little more detailed information perhaps is on number two, Waste Management Landfill Expansion. We did, I did receive a letter since the writing of the report from DEAC, I was copying on it, saying that Waste Management has submitted all of the information for its permit, although we don't have that permit application material, so I've asked Ms. Dobson Elliott to inquire about that, try to get that information as part of the process for them wanting to extend their footprint at the Hickory Hill landfill. They will be required to attend a public hearing. And I think Ms. Dobson is, Dobson Elliott is working on that, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you give some details, if you know, about the day, time, and venue for that?
The venue, the venue will be at Mary Gordon Ellis Building, and it will be... Can't walk, it's really slow, it's late time. It's going to be the 12th at 5:00, I believe. I'm waiting for the publication to come out, April 12th, at 5 o'clock. But as soon as the publication is finalized, I'll make sure it's forwarded to council.
Would give you the information as we receive it, Mr. Chairman, but other than that, I had no other additional items to report out, unless, of course, you have any questions to me.
Any questions, Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Kim, item number one.
Yes, sir.
Can you give us a brief rundown?
Well, I can provide perhaps a little bit more information, Mr. Kim, than was with the original mailing. I can't recall what was original mailing and what was additional information that I received. I think, did you receive the notice, just the notice? No?
I don't think so.
It is a draft hazardous waste permit through DEAC, it's for the U.S. Marine Corps Air Station.
Oh, that I got.
Yep.
I'm not knowing about that, I'm quoting the Harvard Report, your trip to Washington, DC.
Oh, Tripton, I'm sorry. Hold on just one second, please. Let me get there. The trip to Washington, DC, was with the Southern Carolina Alliance, and we did, don't get myself in trouble, I need to register as a lobbyist, but we did some lobbying up there. And the vice chairman joined me, representing Jasper County, and there were several other officials from each of the counties present. And we had a good meeting, specifically, the Southern Carolina Alliance did a great job of dividing the staff from the various counties up to descend upon the first day some staffers. So we met with the staff members from various governmental agencies, and the most pertinent one for Jasper County was Economic Development Administration. So we met with them and discussed their programs, their goals, their opportunities through grants, and what they have done for Jasper County in the past, which has been significant. And they have a great representative locally in the state, in Columbia, is Robin Cooley, who we worked with on a number of projects, we made sure to compliment her at that meeting. And then, we also met the following day with different legislators, and Ms. Clark and I met with Congressman Clyburn and his staff, reviewed our projects, things where we were. And Ms. Heather Rath, your lobbyist, was actually in Washington. She wasn't with our group, but she was in Washington that, at that same time, so we were able to rendezvous with her in the evening and share notes. And she, by the way, will be back for another legislative update for you at your next meeting, but has made a federal request for the projects we've talked about prior through Congressman Clyburn's office. Right. Met with all the legislators up there, and she has put in those requests at the federal level. I don't know if Ms. Clark wanted to expound on our trip, but that's a sum and summary from my point of view.
We just, we asked for the same thing we're gonna ask them for. We are, we spoke highly of sewer. We need sewer in the lower end of the, the southern end of Jasper County. Those people down there don't have any sewer. We need that. And some of the, some of us met with, oh, I'm gonna have to say the name, what's the lady's, the congressman's name? Mays? Mays. And they all seemed very, very interested in what we were saying. Matter of fact, I got an email from Congressman Clyburn's office, from one of his staffers, saying, "There is anything that he can do, you know, please let me know." And I did mention the port, and I thought he was gonna throw me out of his office. He does not wanna talk about Jasper County port. He said he is not dealing with that, because it's gonna bring friction between him and Charleston County, and he is not gonna allow that to happen, because that's where the majority of his votes come from, Charleston County. So in other words, he not counting us when it comes to the port. But all the other people, they were saying, "Let them know, send some email, and Andy's gonna send some information up and respond to some of the things that they were asking for." But they were attentive, and they did listen. So let's hope we're gonna get something.
Doesn't sound like we're gonna get much help from our Congressman Clyburn on the biggest economic impact project on the entire East Coast that's gonna benefit Jasper County. Sad news.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congressman Kim, do you have any other questions? And Mr. Fulton, that concludes your report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda. Any questions, comments, before we call for a motion? Hear none?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the extended agenda, item 7145.
So...
Second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Councilmember comments? Start with Councilman Kim.
Well, I didn't understand the code. You usually always prepare.
I attended, I attended the school board, what a lengthy service that was. But what I recognize is, I was the only one there not from the school. And that's gotta stop. I mean, we wanted to go to school, it's coming, we're great, we have great strides, but we need the families off. Please come. I went to the civilian air patrol exercise at the airport, and people from Charleston, rural beach, all of the state coming in for search and rescue. I try to put it there that they should contact the sheriff's department and the EMT, which they do, and get a better handle on that. I attended the score awards meeting. We had four applications, two came out. One got a award, a special award, Janice Sinclair, the partyville, she does nursing services, which we need a lot of. And if you know of any person that needs score, let me know, and we'll give them contact. If they have a lot, they have money that they have that can give out if you go over certain things. You do P and L, and you have a business plan, and it gets them going. For every entrepreneur, you have two more jobs. I went to Central Power and Light, they had a community service, they're putting some lines into leading for expansion. Number one for two is if there's a problem down the lead, they have no secondary lines going in there. So they go out. They can't, they have no way of putting another different area going into it. So that's it. And then I went to Hardyville, leading, and they're expanding the police department, this is number one. Number two is, they really got on faulty for Arjen Goldard. Arjen Goldard, they're having a problem getting on there, and it's just gonna make it worse. They have trucks, they have turning lanes. I was a little disappointed that some city and people down there didn't go and support the mayor and the council to show faulty that they meant business, so. And it does prove one thing, you come here, you say things, you come to the council, we listen. Thank you.
Thank you. That's that.
All I wanna say is, God is a good God. Yes, he is. And I wanna say to the council, Mr. Davis was here, I fought real hard to get a nice playground to one hour county facility in Mitchell for the little kids to be able to have. Somebody been out there and set it afire, and I would like, I would like my council, my council, my partners, I would like for us to put a, do niche, a reward, and find out who burned it down, and, 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 and we need to do something about that. You know, we need to put, we need to put a little reward so we can find out who burned it down. I mean, in the big D town, you know, I think we went out there and pulled gas on it. I mean, a beautiful playground, you know. I mean, you know, that is absurd, you know, to take something from little kids, you know, that fought so long to get something out there to have, and obviously started looking good, you know, and then just burned it down. Because, I mean, and it happened, we had a power surge out there, the folks out there that had cameras, and the power wasn't back on, it happened, otherwise, then the camera would've died, you know. Yeah. Let's keep that in mind, I mean, you know, I mean, that was on my heart, I mean, because just like I said, it was a long time coming, and, and finally got there, and kids appreciate it. I mean, you know, and I got the call, I've been out there, and, you know, had several white folks came by and spanked, you know, y'all need to do something about that. You know, you need to really find out, you know, my kids come down, my grand, now they ain't got no police to go play. You have one that's in the air ready for them.
We need to look at replacing it.
Yeah.
I think we did request it.
Uh-uh, not yet.
I thought they were gonna stop it, they were ordering it.
No, I think that was a charity.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Garbey?
Yeah, the only thing I'll, I'll go mention, and I'll mention it one more, and this is a county problem, and I think everyone of y'all agrees with this. Jasper County, and I ain't talking about Sunset City, yeah, but I'm talking about, when you saw it coming back to Walleye, back to Walleye Hill, when you were leaving, down the house, and Hardyville, you went on up and go, it's a coming a dump. I've been riding the county for the last couple of weeks, and it is worse than I have ever seen, and I've been here a long time, and I think everybody's in a group. We got so much trash out the highways in the county, the novice park, all the trash, I understand the state highway, we stayed in response to. But we got so much junk in yards and woods and one thing and another, and all it got to do was rock. I mean, you don't have to take my word, just take one day, a ride from Kent to Levee Long House to the Georgia Line, or wherever you wanna go, and just look at it. People, this, this county is drow and propper and so forth. We don't need this in the county, we need to clean up our county, and I mentioned it to the council, and we were with the, and the board, and I'm hoping we can come up with a, with a thing. I'm talking with David Murphy, and I do know that he is short-staffed, I think David's doing all he can possibly do, he's the only one man, he got a lot of area to cover down up the county, and I do know that he was out on the Glover Road the other day with a dump truck, in the back of somebody's dump mattress, and it took him half the day to clean that up. I missed out one part, took half the day. And this is going on awful while county people, and we really need to clean our county up, shake our county up, and make it private, make it those parks. And I know the other day, and I'm gonna be stupid, I know the county has some private contractors that are cleaning up trash, you know, I think it's called LBP contractors, they were picking up the trash and one thing and another, and they were doing this along state roads, so I didn't see it on the county, but I seen it on, on the state road. And we need to do something to clean this thing up, and I get calls, every day I got calls today, I done had two meetings in Hardyville, and people calling it awful times. Man, we got to do something, our trash dumping down the county, they call it a dump. And I said, "Great, all we, our presidency council, and I don't take nobody to give clean up our county." And that's all I got to do. We just need to get, get, get over this thing and really clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Garbey. Madam Clark?
Well, I've already said about Washington, but it is one other thing that I wanted to know, that Congressman Clyburn did see that the YMCA receives $1.5 million toward the bidding of the YMCA on, what is, what's the name of the place? Oldfield. The crossroad, Oldfield. So they did bring that in, and he said all the money is there for the internet and all that, broadband, yeah, that's there. And he said he thought he had given us some money for what, maybe, I can't remember, I don't have a book looking, but I don't remember.
Those are the two items I remember, but specifically with the broadband, he said counties don't need to follow it anymore, with the second wave of funding, it's gonna take care of itself. So we felt very good.
And on Thursday, I went over to the high school, and I can't, I can't even pronounce the name, and I'm not gonna try, I just, we all, everybody calls her Ms. V. Ms. V received was in the five finalists for the state teacher of the year. She was one of the five finalists for the state teacher of the year, and received the check for $10,000. And, yeah, she wins in April, the first part of April, she will receive another check for $25,000. And she had already received a check for $2,000 for the teacher of the year, so Ms. V is rolling and going. And the state superintendent was down, and she was impressed, the Jasper County school sister. She could not believe how the school looked, the things that were done in the school, and Dr. Anderson carried her out to the STEM bus, and she was just... Dr. Anderson carried her out to the STEM bus, and she was just fit to be tied. And the last thing she said to me in our conversation, she said, "I want you to know, Jasper County has some good teachers, and you all ought to be proud. You all ought to be proud." And I think she was pretty much saying that because we've had a lot of negative stuff coming out about the district, but every time there's one negative, there's two positives that comes up. So we want you to continue to pray for our school system. And if you don't care for the school system, just keep your mouth shut and go about your business, and send your children where you want them to go. If you want them to go somewhere else, send them there. Believe the public school system alone. If you can't help me, don't stop me. Move out the way, because we are a community in this country, and I am proud of it.
That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I did have a meeting with Beaufort County Council Chair Joe Passamit last week, talked about some regional projects, some ideas that we have to work together, I think that are very advantageous for us. We'll be meeting again this week to further those conversations, but I hope that something really good's going to come out of those, that I think the council may enjoy talking about and, and working together on as a, as a joint project. But I won't keep us here any longer, so just no further comments. We will ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So.
Have a second. All in favor, stand up. Have a good night.